In order for me to advance within my career, I knew that I had to obtain my bachelor's degree. After years of searching, the LEAP program at Oakwood University was the perfect fit for me. The program is very flexible with my full-time work schedule and my duties as a wife and mother of two children. The greatest benefit of the program is the completion of my bachelor's degree in organizational management within an 18-month period.
So, what are you waiting for? Call today.
Stay with me. We got pulled over for a busted taillight in the back, and the police just he's licensed to carry.
Black lives matter! Black lives matter!
It has been a summer filled with violence. People have been shot, officers have been gunned down in the line of duty. There has been an increasing amount of tension all across the country, and breaking news this afternoon out of Kansas City, Kansas, where a police officer was shot and killed in the line of duty.
Just this weekend, six officers were injured and badly bruised. Three of them lost their lives. Thank you all for joining us, and welcome to Way 31's Town Hall of Plan for Peace. I'm Demetrius McClinton.
I'm Justin McFarland.
And I'm Bill Young. Tonight, we have gathered together a number of different officials from the community, including those from law enforcement, religious organizations, the educational system, as well as community activists, mental health advocates, and of course, the public. Our goal here is to have a very open, frank discussion about ways to help alleviate tensions that have gripped our nation at what has turned out to be a very tumultuous time.
And there is no easy solution, but we want to tackle this problem head-on. That's why we all gathered here today to have an open and real discussion and a plan for action.
Now, if you could not join us here at Oakwood University this evening, you can join us, of course, at home, but of course, online as well at waytv.com. You also can join us on our Facebook page and our Twitter page. We want your questions. We want you involved. Please contact us there, ask your questions, and we will do our very best to get those questions answered. Of course, we'll be here on television until around 7:00, and then we'll continue our conversation online at waytv.com. Now, to introduce us to our panel, here's Bill Young.
Justin, thank you very much. I want to start by introducing you tonight to Oakwood University President Leslie Nelson-Pallard. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Also seated next to him would be Deputy Chief Kirk Giles with the Huntsville Police Department. Next to him, Decatur Police Chief Nate Allen, who has been with us for just two months. Welcome to North Alabama, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce you as well to FBI Supervisor Agent James D. Russell. Seated next to Agent Russell is Wellstone Behavioral Health CEO Brian Davis. And joining us here on the end is Pastor Troy Garner with Fellowship of Faith Church.
Also tonight, we have a few distinguished guests. We have Afu Okelson with Community Evac Activist, Assistant U.S. Attorney Laura Hodge, Trooper Curtis Somerville with the State Troopers Office, Preston Foster, Public Policy Professor here at Oakwood, Sherri Saunders, blogger and a talk show radio host, and Aladdin Bashir with the Huntsville Islamic Center.
I think this would be a good opportunity to begin the evening, get our first question started. It was earlier in the day where President Obama issued an open letter to members of the law enforcement community. In that letter, he thanked officers and law enforcement agents from around the country, saying that "we quote, 'have your backs.'" I want to direct this first to Deputy Giles, Chief Deputy Giles, as well as Chief Allen here. Want to get your reaction, first of all, to the President's comment, and also get a little bit of an idea as to what is going on with your individual departments. What are you saying to your officers to kind of quell any concerns they may have for their own safety, while of course, at the same time, being able to do their jobs?
Well, first off, we appreciate the President acknowledging the fact that I think the general public knows our job is very dangerous. We acknowledge that, and we accept that, we know that, we took that aim, and we will protect. We protect people, and we'll sacrifice our lives for people we don't even know. We don't ask for thanks for that, but at the same time, just to have people acknowledge that, especially on the level of the President of the United States, is very gratifying, it's very rewarding in respect to what we're doing differently at work. Actually, threats are not uncommon for a police officer in the line of work. Not necessarily to the extent that we're seeing now, but certainly, we're advising officers and warning them and reminding them to be careful, be vigilant, have each other's back. And a lot of times, in information sharing, you know, we get information that we'll share with surrounding agencies, because we truly don't know sometimes whether a threat is credible. And at this point in time, you can't take a threat as not being credible. So with that, we certainly don't want to take it to the extreme. We don't want officers... Officers know they have a dangerous job, so they're already doing the job that they do. You know, for me, as a deputy chief, I worry about my officers, but I'm also a father of a police officer, so I worry about him as well. So, we just appreciate the public, you know, coming up to us and telling us thank you, and that, to me, for me personally, that's good enough.
Chief Allen, your thoughts?
In addition to what Deputy Chief said, it's one thing that I try to stress to each and every officer, is to always remember that every person they come in contact with is not a bad guy. That's the biggest thing to remember. During these very difficult and trying times, we must remember that we have citizens out there who support us, citizens out there who loves us, family members who loves us. If we become a us-versus-them mentality, we create a real problem in the country. So that's the biggest thing that I stress along with what the deputy chief said, is that to remember, officer's safety first, and the next thing to remember that we have community out there that's going to have our backs too. The President saying he has our back, that's a very good thing to hear and to know, but to know that the citizens are the ones that's really supporting us is more soothing to the local police officers than having the President's safety.
And Chief Allen, you also, I mean, you just mentioned that they have your backs. President Obama said today that he wants to make sure that you all have more resources. I talked to several officers who are very concerned about that. What would you have to say to them in order for them to stay safe, and then also to keep us safe? Because if they're concerned about their own safety, they may not be as effective on the job to protect us.
You know, there's a very fine line between the resources that we have and the resources that can be offered from the federal government. We have to keep in mind that we don't want to create a more militant state, so the type of resources is still yet to be seen. We need the resources, we always need financial resources, but more than anything, we need to communicate. We need to take our message, our message of communication to the streets, to the people on the street, where they are, because everyone can't be here. So that's more of a resource that we need, the form of communication, more than we need any other resource.
All right, we do have a question here in the audience, and sir, what is your name?
Demetrius Keel.
Demetrius, where are you coming from?
I am coming from Texas, but I'm now living in Huntsville, Alabama now. But I'm a co-owner of a barber shop here in Huntsville, Alabama.
All right, what is your question, sir?
My question is, what resources are available for the barber shop to maybe connect with the youth as for giving them a positive insight, things to do that will be a positive influence rather than resulting in thinking, as they say, "An empty mind is a devil's workshop." Maybe we can influence by being able to connect, because we do have clients from five years old all the way to 50 and up. So we have a connection with our cultures, nationalities, and races. And I just want to know, how can we connect, and who do I contact to actually get involved in the community as for giving back?
Do you have a particular person that you wanted to reach out to? Pastor Garner, your connection with a lot of young people, with your church, obviously very connected with youth, how do you respond to that? How are you able to help a nice business owner like this be able to connect further with the youth and give them a positive example?
Yes, the platform is definitely there at our church, and not just my church, but other churches as well. If you just call some of the local pastors, they would be more than willing to have you to come and share with our youth. Back-to-school is coming up, most churches are having back-to-school programs. I know specifically at the Fellowship of Faith we are, we would love for you to come and share with our youth.
President Pollard, I also want to extend that question to you as well, sir. Obviously, here at Oakwood, where you have a lot of young people doing a lot of great things, how are you able to help business owners or other community leaders who want to step up and provide a positive example? What are some ways to help set the table for a business owner like this to provide some young folks?
Well, specifically, I think the business owners have to provide the access that is needed for university personnel to be able to route people who provide resources and skills and experiences into those spaces. And I think Mr. Keel has pointed out something really exceptional. There are existing structures within our community that could actually be maximized in building out plans for peace, and they can be used as centers of communication. We all know that in the African-American community, almost all information flows through the barber shop and the beauty shop. Does it, yeah? They know before the mayor knows what's going to be happening. Right, right. So that's where we get our... That's really a center of information. But I think from the universities in our community, because I'd like to represent all of those, I think that there are departments, for instance, in our Department of History, and with Professor Foster is here tonight, there are those who can share out of their wealth of experience in terms of policy as well as simple intervention, how we can make our communities much safer and much more service-oriented.
Thank you.
Can I have a question over here from Afu?
All right, officers, you mentioned about us creating an environment where officers see people and they deal with the people that they're serving. When you look at, there's an officer on, I believe, on social media named Officer Norman, who does a lot with the community that he polices in Arkansas, well, he serves in Arkansas, and a lot of it has to do with relationship building, them calling him by name, him actually engaging with the community, engaging with families, with kids. What efforts do you all take to ensure that your officers actually have a relationship with the communities that they serve, so that it's actually, it's an environment where we're speaking the same language and we understand each other, as opposed to us policing the community and actually serving and protecting the community?
Anyone in particular you want to...
Yeah. Well, it goes back to the barber shop thing. Just last Wednesday, I had a meeting at the barber shop, which was kind of unknown for a police chief to go to the barber shop and have a meeting. But I was asking, and I attended, and that is, that's a big deal, because I use the people in the barber shop as my ambassadors to go out and deliver the message. And speaking very frankly, I'm considered an overhead, so I don't know anything, but the young people talking to young people is what really helps out. So we take the message back, and what young people want to know is what I've been told, is that they want to know, what are the laws? What are our policies and procedures? What we can and cannot do? And that's what we share at the barber shop. It was just 10 of us, just 10 men sitting on a corner, talking and sharing, but those 10 guys went back out in the community and was able to share what we can and cannot do. And that's how you begin actually a dialogue. Here, we can't really sit down, we have to take the message back to the streets, and that's how we break it, because policing are needed. We can't do away with policing at all. And who do you call whenever something goes wrong? You call the police. When you have a situation that you can't handle, you call the police. You want the police to come in. We talked about also having citizens police their own communities. Policing our police officers can't solve every crime, because we're not there all the time, but the community can. Our job is there to assist the community solve crimes. So that's what we need. We need the ambassadors to go out into communities, tell them what we can and cannot do, police themselves, call us in for us to assist them solving problems, and that's how we start to make a difference. But you start to make a difference one person at a time.
Let me add something to that if you want, and it pertains to your question and the gentleman before you. Each precinct has a community relations officer, and each of those gentlemen go out and they work with different aspects of the community that a lot of times that are issues that the street officer may not always have, I wouldn't say experience with, but say the time and the resources to deal with that. We also have in our audience Ray Caldwell, who is a community outreach person, that she is very involved. And you take for the young men that come, and women too, for that matter, but come into the barber shop who are under 20 years of age, we have a Ranger program. It's a chance for young men and women to learn about law enforcement, to learn about law enforcement. On the other hand, if you're over 21, we're going to accept the application for police officer in August, you're more than welcome to apply. But having said that, think about this a minute. You can be part of the solution, okay? You can be part of the solution. That's what we want. We want people in the community being part of the solution. And besides that, okay, let's say you don't have dreams of being a police officer. We have a citizen observer program. You can ride with a police officer, see what he's like. We have a lot of things, but I mentioned Johnny Harmsworth is one of our precinct CROs who is sitting in the audience, as well as Ray Caldwell. And Ray is looking to reach the youth in this community, whether through the Ranger program or other way. And remember also, we have our school resource officers. Those guys are working in the schools, because they want to give young men and women a positive interaction with a police officer. Now, not every interaction is going to be positive, depending on what they do, but the majority of time, it's going to be a positive interaction with our young kids that are in the school, so that when they're out in the streets as adults, they'll at least remember, "You know, I remember that officer, he was a good guy." And not all officers are bad, just like not all citizens are bad.
And thank you for that. Thank you for that response. And it's, as you said, it's on us as a community to continue to push the efforts of, you know, the communication, those relationships. You know, going back to the, you know, the understanding of certain multicultural nuances to how we deal with each other in the community. I'm a licensed counselor, so a lot of my background is in multicultural counseling. So understanding, you know, what it entails to look at someone and say, "Okay, well, this is a black male." That black male may be African, he may be West Indian, he may be, you know, of a different ethnicity. So you talk about the intersectionality of race and culture. How well do you feel, and this is just a transparent question, how well do you feel your officers are trained or capable of dealing with individuals that they may not understand, or they may come from different backgrounds?
That training is never-ending. Do our officers know how to work in every different community? No. No. Are they able to size people up just by looking at them? No. Does that happen? Yes. So, to answer your question directly, it's very difficult to answer. Training is ongoing. Cultural diversity training, cultural sensitivity training, whatever you want to call it, that training is always ongoing. Now, keep in mind, when I say training is ongoing, we need assistance. I know in the city of Decatur, we need assistance from the community that we serve to help trainers. I think one of the problems that we have in policing in general is we try to train ourselves on policing from other professionals that we know in the field, and we fall short on getting trainers from outside of the field to come into our department and train us in different areas. Where I come from, we have a lot of training in different cultures, because the way you act in certain cultures are totally different. If you go into Asian culture and do certain things, it can be considered very disrespectful. You go into Hispanic and Latino community, they may not look at you. That would be considered respectful. In other cultures, that can be disrespectful. You have to learn the different cultures that you're going to serve, and how do you learn that culture? You learn that culture from being in the community, being in that culture, and ask them, "What do I do?", and taking that feedback. And I think that's where we fall short, is actually getting the information from the community.
May I also, may I also add, I think this is where our university communities can be invaluable resources, because, for instance, our campus, we have 81 countries represented, no, 59 countries represented on the campus. So, along with being in the community, I believe that, that every, and I spent 14 years in cultural competency education. So, with that said, we also, though, we also need translators who are internal to the culture, people from within the culture, to translate it out, just as we would if we were speaking a language that was not our first language, we would get a translator to do that. So there are cultural translators as well, who can be invaluable resources in understanding some of the dynamics that can keep an encounter from escalating.
I'd like to direct my next question to Brian Davis with Wellstone, and also to you, Pastor Garner. In your opinions, and this is strictly opinion question, and in your interactions on a daily basis, are we living in a very angry time in our world? What do you think? Is there anger? Is there frustration? Is it just a perception? What are your thoughts?
I think it's obvious to everybody in this room. I mean, I think that's why we're here. I mean, life is more stressful and more difficult than it's ever been before, and it's escalating at a rapid pace. I know the people that we see at Wellstone, which is Madison County's mental health center, you know, the normal coping mechanisms that we learn as young people, as children in our homes, some of those begin to break down when you face things that are unprecedented in your life, situations that you've never dealt with before. And so, I think that's where really the term "community" comes in. I mean, we learn eventually, if we're smart enough, that we can't whip this world alone. We need, we need help. And whether it's partnering with law enforcement, or churches, or the programs that the city and county offer, it's about us and not about me trying to make it on my own. And I think it's just, it's, I wouldn't say harder to do that now, it's probably impossible to do that.
Pastor Garner?
Yes, sir. You mentioned the word anger, and also fear. A lot of people are afraid as well, and I like how he used the word "community," because we definitely must rebuild our communities, because there's a lot of divisiveness that is within our community, but we want to get back to having that culture of community.
The other thing we see a lot are people, when they come in, they're looking for, "How can I fix this situation?" Often, it's, "How can I fix that person over there?" And a lot of what we do is to try to help people to start by looking within, and to look at my own emotional health, my own physical health, my own relationship health, my spiritual health. And if I can kind of do a gut check, a search of my own heart, and focus, learn tools, learn the things that will help me be healthy in all those ways, and live my life in a productive way, then I can be a whole lot more effective in how I deal with other people. But it starts with looking within first, instead of always pointing the finger and asking, "How can those folks over there change?" It starts with me, and it starts with each of us as individuals.
All right. Thank you so much for that, for that answer. We do want to jump in and let you know, we are answering questions on social media. We got a question from Julian that I do want to direct to our officers, especially to, I believe, my FBI representative that's up there. We're getting a question that says, "When the team uses the term 'Black Lives Matter', does it only mean 'Black Lives Matter,' or is it 'Black Lives Matter 2'?" And I guess the bigger question is, what does the term "Black Lives Matter" mean to members of the law enforcement community at this point? There's been a lot of controversy about the name. So at this point, especially from the federal, obviously is where you work, sir, then from the local level, what does the "Black Lives Matter" term mean to you, and what does the movement mean to you?
Sure. Thank you for that question, sir. It's an excellent question. First of all, I want to thank Way 31 and Oakwood University for hosting this forum. My director has long said that it's very difficult to hate close-up, and I think what we need is more of these types of forums to interact with normally agents and police officers with the local community, that we don't, at least on the federal perspective, we don't get that as often as we would like to. And as far as quantifying what "Black Lives Matter," you know, of course they do. That is one of the two core values for the FBI, is protecting the American public and defending the United States Constitution. And everyone in the United States is our responsibility to fulfill those two core missions, and I just don't really have much more to say than we take those very core values very seriously, and that is our position when we investigate any violation, and when we do any of our work, regardless of race, creed, sex, and any, we don't take that into account. We just cover the rule of law, and if the law is violated, that's what we're going to investigate.
Yes, I'm not a police officer, but I'd like to speak to that, if I may.
Yes, sir.
From an academic perspective, I guess what I'm about to say is in the interest of kind of, you know, an HBCU campus, so kind of keeping it real.
Yes, sir.
So in the interest of that, I have numbers of students who are involved in the Black Lives Matter movement. And so, I listened to the speeches last night at the convention. I didn't recognize any of the people that they were describing as members of the Black Lives Matter movement. I didn't recognize them. What I recognize are young people who are affirming that their existence does matter, and it should be treated with dignity and respect, along with all others. It's unfortunate that we've allowed other people, we as communities, have allowed other people to polarize us around what is a simple, truthful, and accurate affirmation, that "Black Lives Matter." When I say "breast cancer matters," that doesn't mean that I don't care about prostate cancer, does it? I don't think it does. But what it does mean is that the subject under discussion right now is breast cancer. And I think that's where our communities are, and as long as we listen to other people, rather than listening to each other and asking each other, "What do we mean when we say this?" Of course, "Black Lives Matter 2." Maybe some people would feel better somatically if we said "2," but even after we say "2," it's still the same truth. The truth does not change because we say "2." So, I think part of what we've got to do in these communities, in our conversations, is to be able to listen to each other, ignore the politicians. I'll just say that. Ignore the politicians. And listen, let's talk to each other, because we will never have a peaceful community if we are not in conversation. Here's the second thing I would want to say.
Dr. Pollard, if I can pause you for one moment here.
Please, I'm sorry.
No, 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 do not apologize at all. You've made some fantastic points. I do want to pause you for one moment, because I do believe we are going to be wrapping this up on the air. However, the discussion is going to be continuing here, and for our folks who are watching us at home, we are going to be continuing the discussion online at waytv.com. We're also going to be continuing live streaming on our Facebook page. So, we can just hit the pause button for one moment, we're going to get back to you. But for now, thank you so much for everybody at home who is watching.
In order for me to advance within my career, I knew that I had to obtain my bachelor's degree. After years of searching, the LEAP program at Oakwood University was the perfect fit for me. The program is very flexible with my full-time work schedule and my duties as a wife and mother of two children. The greatest benefit of the program is the completion of my bachelor's degree in organizational management within an 18-month period.
So, what are you waiting for? Call today.
We got pulled over for a busted taillight in the back, and the police just he's licensed to carry.
Black lives matter! Black lives matter!
We are continuing our Way 31 Town Hall of Plan for Peace.
Right now, we would like to turn the floor back over to Dr. Pollard with Oakwood University, and allow you to continue the thought.
Yes, and so the, probably the second piece that I'm so excited to hear about is the emphasis on relational policing, and thank you for that. Many of us were raised in generations where we were taught to be afraid of the police. That's just a reality. And the gap between the police and the community can be closed through the relational policing that I've heard tonight. So I just want to affirm that, and I think everyone in our community affirms that that's the direction we need to move in order to keep our communities safe. And we thank you for what you're doing, and again, with President Obama, we condemn the violence that has happened in the direction of our police officers. We do condemn it, and we do not feel good about it. And I hope that people don't see that as every black person. You know, sometimes the burden of the race falls upon one, so one crazed, hate-filled black man decides to shoot police officers, and then we all feel like we have to exculpate ourselves by announcing our distance from that, and we probably should. But there's a burden that comes with that. So we do not support that in this community, nor in any other HBC community that I know of, and we appreciate the work.
of, and we, we appreciate the work that our police officers do to keep our communities safe, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pollard, and we want to continue. I have questions here from the audience. I have a man who's been standing here patiently. Thank you very much, Michael. He's from Huntsville. What is your question, sir?
I have a question, simply, and it's this. I just want to thank each and every one of you, all of our officers who are here. Thank you for taking your time to come and answer our questions. I had a, I had a really hard time a couple weeks ago when we had those shootings on that Wednesday and Thursday, and I couldn't take anymore. So a group of friends and myself, we went and we decided we were going to go down and we were going to pray for our police officers. We had about 25 of us who went to North Precinct on second shift roll call, and we stood and we waited patiently, and we prayed for the officers, and we, we let them know that we supported them. But just two days later, we got a phone call from City Hall and the legal department saying that we were not welcome to continue to do that, because we would have, we would have liked to continue that in the other precincts to show our support, and to let them know that we were here for them and to pray for them, because the job is very dangerous. Could you shed some light for me on what the process is behind it and why we would be turned away when we're trying to offer support?
Deputy Chief Giles, clearly.
And I don't, I don't know exactly what transpired in your phone call. I do remember there was...
I'm sorry, Deputy Chief, into the microphone a little bit better so everyone can hear you, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you, sir, yes.
I don't know what exactly transpired in your phone call. I do remember hearing about that there was a, and we thank you, first off, let me say thank you for that. Probably the way I'm going to say this is not going to come out good, I'm only talking about my opinion, but we're always very mindful of, of the separation of church and state, of making people where, you know, for instance, to, to recognize everybody's freedom to worship however they want to. What should have been conveyed was, "You're welcome to come down there, and, and our officers are, are welcome to join you." They, they, ideally, they shouldn't have been in a roll call setting, but certainly welcome to join you. Matter of fact, I even got a phone call this morning from the secretary that says, "Hey, I've got a preacher and his son, won't know if he can, if he can pray for our officers outside by the memorial." Absolutely, it's a public place, so we do want that, and, and I encourage you to do it again. We, and, and matter of fact, we have a very similar event going to happen tomorrow, but it's going to be at a church. One of the things that we mentioned, and this is something we did several years ago, one of the local churches, or actually several local churches, printed up and distributed what we call prayer cards. And those prayer cards individualized that particular officer, and it said that the person named, who was praying for me. And, and what was important about that was, while I can remember the prayer you and I may have shared, I have that in my car, I look at it every night, or every day, I'm mindful of it every day. I pray every day and every night, but I look at that card every day knowing, with a smile comes over my face knowing I've got that person, got my back in prayer. So that was one thing I would, I would hope that you would consider doing as well, but we do thank you for that. And there was certainly no slight mention in that respect as far as why that transpired the way it did.
And then my last question is this, it, it deals with the police-community relations. Is there a plan in the works potentially to educate the community more on how to deal with police? Because police have been dehumanized through this process of they end up killing someone, whether it's justified or not, and then an officer or several is also killed in response. And that's a terrible thing that happens. But how can we go about educating our, our teens? I'm a parent, so I have kids. How can I go about educating my kids? And is there maybe possibly an initiative in the works where we can educate kids on how to deal with traffic stops? Why are you pulled from the car in this situation? Why are you not in this situation? How do you deal with it if you're a concealed carry holder where you have, you have a firearm? How can you deal with these situations with the police so it puts more of a human element back into the police and our community?
We have several ways to go about that. We have a program that we put on last year on why police do what they do. It was well-attended, we're going to do it again this year, I'm not exactly sure when, and Johnny and Ray can give you more information. Matter of fact, he brought some brochures with him that outlined some of those things, what to do if you're stopped by the police. And Johnny may be able to, if you bring a microphone over, he may be able to add to that if he would.
Yeah, right here, so when, when is the next time this may be happening?
Okay, we're actually looking at trying to do it probably in September, but when we do this, what we need is our community leaders to step up, because this is going to be a two-fold thing. We need our leaders to go through the program where you walk through our footsteps, where then when we go out here and train everybody, we got y'all's support and all that. Along with that, like I said, we, we have these brochures that walks through what to expect. And plus, the great thing about this is, is that my phone number is back here, and what I want to challenge everybody here to do is come reach out to me, find out all the programs we're doing. Give you an example, we're going to be doing a Halloween in October. We do this free, we had 1,800 kids come through the West Precinct, but to do this, we need y'all, the community, to come join us, dress up in costumes, and let's give out the candy to these kids, because a lot of these kids don't have a safe place to go. We also have the Ranger Program. Anybody who joins the Ranger Program, this is two phases right there. One, we get to help train our young kids to be police officers, but two, the main thing is, is that it allows these kids with multi-diversity cultures to teach our police officers. So this is how our community comes together. We need to start working on it, and the great thing about it is Huntsville in North Alabama is different. As Dr. Pollard says, look at how many different communities, how many different places from around the world that is here. We've been working together how long? How long has Marshall Space Flight Center been here? This ain't a new thing. Let's challenge everybody, let's get together, and let's resolve these issues. Look at this pamphlet, and if you have an issue with these pamphlets, come talk to me, let us change them, because we, I'm not going to tell you I'm the expert. I need you to help me change where we can serve you better, because the reality is, 30 years ago, when I joined the police department, I joined to serve y'all. Help me be better. I love learning.
Thank you.
And I do have another question for Mr. Bashir. We've been talking a lot about the racial tensions, but there are also cultural and religious tensions as well. I know you all have opened up your Islamic center for other people to come and learn more about that. If you want to talk to me more about the community relations?
Well, the Muslim community is, is partly part of the fabric of this beautiful community of Huntsville. We have doctors, we have engineers, and it's a typical immigrant community, because that's what attracts us, the US, is come, get your PhD, and proceed on with your dreams, thanks to Oakwood, UAH, and others. And with that diversity, you have people who own gas stations, who own grocery stores, who do labor work, which you, in God's eye, they are better than I am, and I'm sure they are. With that being said, when we hear politician, and thank you for acknowledging, leave the politician alone, and allow me to, to mention this, when you have some politician trumping all over themselves for saying, you know, Muslims don't come in, and Muslims are terrorists, and all that, the stereotype and the division and the hate, it's not Muslim-specific, it's not black-specific, it's not Catholic-specific. When you have hate environment, you hate everybody, if you allow it to a group or to a person. It's fair game for everyone. And it's a matter of education. It's what we know, we fear, and what we fear, we hate and avoid, and we don't want to learn about. So not preaching to the choir is trying to attract the community. If you have a question, come to Huntsville Islamic Center. I guarantee you, you're not going to have a secret spell that will be thrown in you or become a Muslim. I guarantee you that, okay? I don't work on commission, I'm not a preacher, I'm an engineer. And you're not going to be thrown in holy water and you become Muslim or something like that. We're not going to do that, trust me. So I'm a servant, like many of us in the Muslim community. Call, ask question. Do you guys believe in cats? Do you guys eat with a right hand, left hand? It doesn't matter what question. Just come and let us know one another. Let's get, get us closer to one another. We have more challenges. I, allow me to mention this if you don't mind. I, I love the word "Black Lives Matter," but I go farther than that. What quality of life this life has? I have, I am throwing into the police lab, being a dad, being grandpa, being a counselor, being a coach, being a police discipline in the school, I'm throwing on somebody who's making $28,000, getting out of the car, hoping it's not going to be shot in this process, come back to the car for $28,000. I'm sorry, I'm not... But in effect is that if we teach kids to be respectful to authority, to be respectful to authority, if the ministers, rabbis, preachers teach peace, like you do, I'm a big fan. If we all teach and preach love, that Jesus, peace be upon him, was love, and I have to believe in him. If we don't do that, we're asking for trouble. We still have generations in our home that remember blacks only, water fountain. We still have that. That pain exists, but that pain can be translated to energy, that I'm going to be a doctor, I'm going to be engineer, by golly, I'm going to break the vicious cycle of poverty, and I'm going to change, but I'm going to have poverty cycle from generation to generation to generation, public housing. There is not enough police force in the world that can keep that. You don't trust me, go to Chicago. Forty people in one night, you call it a cookout. Forty people get shot in one night, call it a cookout. So the Muslim community, we are trying very hard to work with the African-American community, with other communities, to do the exchange. Your university, and we're blessed to have university, and Dr. Keith, and, you know, Muslim, seven days advanced relationship, is a beautiful, beautiful relationship. We get the students, international students, they ask what Muslims are, what, what we do, and it's beautiful. We need more of that. We need more of that. We need to get to know one another, and we need really to build one with one another. Build, not hate, that's how we're going to change.
Pastor Pollard, good gracious, he's here right now. Step up with your question, sir.
Okay, before I ask my question, I wanted to respond to a question that was asked in terms of what forum is there, what opportunity is there to be able to educate our young people in terms of how to interact, et cetera, with the law enforcement? I do want to share that at the Oakwood University Church on July the 30th at 6:00 PM, we are going to be having a community forum with Huntsville representatives from the Huntsville Police Department, community leaders, et cetera, partly dealing with how to deal with law enforcement, what are your rights as citizens, et cetera, what do you do if you happen to be stopped, or if you have to interact, et cetera. So I just wanted to share that that's something that we're doing, and I'm sure there are other churches that are willing to do the same thing. My question stems from a statement that the FBI representative, forgive me, I don't remember your name, made, in terms of part of your responsibility is to uphold the Constitution. It seems to me, part of the, a large part of the, of where we find ourselves deals with the Second Amendment of the Constitution, with the right to bear arms. And so whether people are carrying arms openly or concealed weapons, the more weapons that we have, the more that people have them, is the more that they're used, and then the more killings that we're going to have. I understand it is a very, very divisive issue between those who feel strongly about having weapons and those who feel strongly about if we eliminated the weapons, we wouldn't have these shootings. As police officers, as the FBI, how do you deal with that tension?
Let's start with you, our FBI representative.
Well, thank you for that question, sir. But that, unfortunately, that is a political question. That's something that the FBI does not get involved with. It's a, it is a Second Amendment constitutional issue, and at face value, the enforcement of that, or the lack of the enforcement of that, is, is more a state and local issue. Every jurisdiction has the ability to create constraints on the Second Amendment, and that is left up to the court systems and the district attorneys, and/or if it reaches the federal level, the US Attorney's Office, to make an interpretation on whether someone has violated the Second Amendment. And that's not all I can, I can...
Let's, let's try to ask it this way, if we can, then, and maybe not to you, but maybe to our, our two local law enforcement agencies here. If you are conducting the traffic stop, and one of your officers is conducting a traffic stop, and you find out that that person that you've just pulled over is a concealed weapon holder, they have a permit, or you find out there is a gun in that car somewhere, whether it's in that person's possession, or it's under a seat, or it's in a glove box, how does that change your officer's mentality when it comes to conducting that traffic stop, even if they have the gun legally, they have that same, if they have that right, if they have that Second Amendment right, and they are abiding by the rules, does that turn it up a notch for your officer who is conducting that traffic stop?
Whenever there's the presence of a weapon, the notch goes up. I mean, period. The first thing that we want to train our officers do is to, to recognize that there is one, to ask if there's a permit for it, and let's put it in a secure area. That's the first thing we want to do on it. The biggest thing is, is not to overreact. We try to teach our officers not to overreact just because there's a sign of a weapon, or someone says there's a weapon, and to, and to move forward, find out if, if the person has it legally or illegally, and if so, we, we deal with it accordingly. But the biggest thing that we try to teach is, and remember, we're dealing with humans. We try to teach to remain calm, and let's try to move forward in accordance to the law.
All right, I have another question.
Good evening, my name is Natalie Duranville, and I'm a student here at Oakwood University, and my question is to you, Mr. Ryan Davis, and it's, what kind of changes would you like to see within the judicial system that would reduce recidivism among moving forward?
For people with mental health?
Yes.
Issues? Sure, I guess one thing I, one thing I want to say, I think I was introduced as a mental health advocate, which is a real privilege for me. I've been a mental health professional for a long time, have lots of friends who have a serious mental illness, and the research is clear now that people who are in treatment, active treatment with a mental illness are no more violent, no more risky than the comparison population. The issue is, now, does that mean that people with mental illness don't commit violent crimes? Of course they do, and we, we've seen those things, but just like Aladdin was saying, it's not a Muslim issue, it's not a black issue, it's not a Catholic issue, it's not a mentally ill issue either. And I get bothered as an advocate for people with mental illness when there's a broad brush that swept, because we do have some people that commit those violent crimes. The key is, you ask about reforms, we have to decide what's important to us as a community, and I'm talking about a large scale, not just in Huntsville or Madison County, but in this country. I mean, we've seen the story after story, whether it was Aurora, or Sandy Hook, or, I mean, the list goes on and on and on, and every single time, we hear the words, "We've got to invest more in treatment in the community so that people won't feel isolated, they won't become non-compliant with..." Treatment works. I mean, it's proven that it, it works if there's enough out there, and if we have ways to keep people engaged in it. But in spite of all the words about how we're going to invest the resources into making those things available in this country, it's just not happening. In Alabama, in the last seven years, the Department of Mental Health, which is our largest funder, is the local mental health center, is funded from the state's general fund. Well, well, you know what the status of the general fund is, it's broke. It's always broke. And so the Department of Mental Health has actually been cut $40 million over the last seven years. So while we're saying the words, "We're going to invest more, we're going to do more," we're reducing funding, which eliminates resources. That's equivalent to us as a mental health center of having fewer officers on the street. We have fewer caseworkers that can go out and do home visits, and so I, I just think we have to decide as a community, as a country, what's important to us. I mean, we're going to find ways to fund the things that are important to us. I mean, I was listening the other day to the revenues that's generated by the National Football League. That's important in America. Well, I'd like to think that the things we're talking about tonight are equally or more important.
Let's get back to our folks here in line. Lady Rochelle, what is your question?
Lady Rochelle, what is your question?
Good afternoon, distinguished guest. I relocated to this community from California, and as a parent of two minority males here in college, there's one thing, one word that I hear coast to coast, and that is profiling. And so I would like to know what one thing we can do as a community that would address in our community the issue of stereotyping, which many of the black and minority males feels plays into the issue of them being profiled. And so if maybe the police department and Minister Gardner, I think it is, could address that?
Minister, we can start with you, Pastor. What do you think? Profiling, how do we deal with that?
Well, from a biblical perspective, I preach equality, preach love, preach against racism or any racial injustices, and just preach love, because I believe that love is just the panacea for all.
To our folks with the police department, and I know this is a, this is a heavy topic that I think is on a lot of people's minds. People feel like I look just like the next guy, and you're pulling me over for something that he did, and you don't even know me or my situation. How do you respond to that?
Racial profiling is illegal, plain and simple. It's wrong, and it's illegal, and we don't preach that. Now, there's a difference between, for instance, you know, the young lady talking about, if you, if you commit a traffic violation, we don't, and a lot of times, you can't even see who's driving the car, let alone you see the offense being committed, and then upon approach, you may see who the person is. But certainly not, not stopping the car based on the color or the skin of the person behind the wheel.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Ferguson from Huntsville. I am on police reform. I'm on, I'm on everything. I'm all over the internet. My problem is, what are police doing to get the guns out our neighborhoods, off the streets? Judge Mathis did a gun buyback program. Why isn't Huntsville Decatur on board? And the FBI, please help, because you're not paying attention. There are people, threatening people on social media. Isn't that what you're supposed to be doing? Keeping them off? Because people have guns and everything, so what is exactly your job? Because I'm not clear.
You want them to...
Yeah, they need to have a gun buyback program to get these guns out of the hands of the criminals in our neighborhoods, and they're not taking any efforts that I've seen thus far.
All right. Illegal, I assume you're talking about illegal guns.
Well, anybody shooting up the block, anybody, that's the thugs, that's anybody. I mean, we're trying to get them off our streets, because it's about to go down.
All right. Gun buyback programs, and any kind of efforts to get guns off the streets?
It's been our experience on gun buybacks, they're not very successful. What we end up doing is getting the guns from the little old lady up the street who husband passed away, and she don't know what to do with the guns. The guns who are actually in the hands of criminals, they don't come give them to us to buy back for several reasons. One is they need them to commit their crime. The second, they don't want to come to us, because we're going to run them, and they have warrants on them, and then they have a gun. So it's very difficult to achieve the gun buyback thing, so that's why most police departments throughout the country have stopped doing that. Now, another thing is, it kind of conflicts with the Second Amendment, the right to bear arms. If we start trying to take guns from people, then it creates a real big problem. If we start stopping people because they have guns and running them to records, that's going to be a problem. It's a very thin line whenever we stop somebody. You're talking about the racial profiling. Does that exist?
Yes.
Yes. Police departments across the country, we don't advocate that, but does it happen? Yes. I've been a black male, I have to say, yes, it happens. Even my being a police officer for the last 30 years, am I racially profiled? Yes. As a commander coming from Knoxville, when I got called in on the night shift, I had to get up and put a full uniform on like this to go out into what I consider my area of town to work in, because if not, I would be seen as another black guy with a gun, which is not a good thing to be seen as. So yes, racial profiling does occur. How do we prevent that? We prevent that by education. Now, speaking very frankly with you, and I can speak as being a black male, most of my black male friends and things, what do we do? We draw attention to ourselves, loud music going, windows being tinted too dark. Yes, it's something else that caused the police officers to stop them. What we do as law enforcement officers, how we fall short is oftentimes, we don't tell the person our name and reason for the stop. Remember, back to the education. Our community should be educated on what we, as law enforcement, can and cannot do, what our policies and procedures are. So if our procedures are, first, and this is talk from police departments throughout this country, the first thing we do upon a stop, racial profiling or not, whatever you think is reasonable, is to introduce ourselves and tell the person the reason for the stop. And that's where we in law enforcement may fall short. But most times, when that happens, what happens? Male, female, what you stopped me for, and it goes downhill from there, on both sides. So that creates a problem.
I'm sorry, Chief Allen, that's a policy that you have in order...
No, no, that's a policy throughout police departments throughout this country. If you ask any police officer, chief, sheriff, anything, the first thing we teach officers to do, introduce ourselves, hi, I'm Chief Allen with the Decatur Police Department, and the reason I stop you is, first thing that comes across your mouth, no matter where you are in this country, from California, the lady came from California, to the East Coast, that's taught throughout everywhere, is to introduce yourself, identify yourself, and tell the reason for the stop.
It's just not followed all the time.
It's just not followed all the time. And that's where we fall short. How do we know that it's not being followed? When do we know that it's not being followed? We need to hear from you all, the community. You got to tell us when the policies and procedures are not being followed.
Sorry, we've got a lot of folks. What's your question, sir?
So I'm reading this about if you're stopped by a police officer, and first of all, it's a hard job. And I think where, reading this, I think where some of the frustration or the difficulty comes in is that one of the lines, it says, although these procedures maximize officers' safety, they may seem standoffish, impolite, or offensive to law-abiding citizens. That's understandable, and I think that interaction, that citizen may feel standoffish, they may, they may feel for their safety. And so there's a, it's kind of a back and forth, and it's a tug. And so it becomes, when they're asking questions, why did I get stopped? Hopefully, they answer it, and hopefully, you know, both people are being polite. Why did I stop you? This is why I stopped you.
Correct.
But then sometimes, there may be one person, either the officer or the citizen, that maybe they had a long day. You know, maybe they just came off of, you know, a domestic violence, or, you know, just a very tense situation. And so my question is, when there's, there's things in place for officers to, to have proof or to speak as to why they did what they, what they carried out. This is why I pulled them over, they had this, my camera shows that, my report shows that, things of that nature. But just like two kids, if you got one kid saying, well, this is what happened, the other kid says, this is what happened, what protects the citizen, or what does the citizen have to say, no, this is what happened, from my standpoint? I can't record you. I can't, you know, call someone else to be a witness. All we have to go on is the officer's...
How do you make sure a citizen gets a fair shake?
Right.
In the court of law, or, you know, we get in that courtroom, if it's my word against yours, if you're the one wearing the badge, a lot of people feel like there's a huge disadvantage there.
You know, and I constantly hear that the system is swayed toward law enforcement. It's the only system that we have. And what I encourage people to do, especially minority, are to vote. You, you have to vote in order to change laws. To answer your question directly about what to do if it's your word against the officer's word on it, first of all, I have to tell you, never argue it on the side of the road. Never argue it over, on the side of the road. Always take it to court, or take it to the supervisor at the station, at the precinct, in any police department. Remember, I'm speaking generally. Any police department has a complaint system, a tracking system, where you can go and file a complaint. Now, we're up to probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 85 to 90% of police agencies across the country are having some form of camera system in it. You can view it. You said about you can't record it? Who said you can't record it? People are recording this. I got cameras going around here right now. Record it, record it. On what to do, what to do when stopped by the police, there's things that I try to tell people all the time, your goal is to go home. That's your goal. And I'm in a public setting, and I don't want to say this, but you want to go home with the same number of hoes in you that you started your day out with. You really do. You want to go home. Whatever it takes to go home, you go home. And usually, it takes a yes, sir, yes, ma'am, no matter what happens, yes, sir, yes, ma'am. There is an avenue, a way of filing a complaint, one, or taking it to court. And yes, you can record it. People turn their cameras on now and sit them on the dash, turn the, turn the, either video or audio on, and sit them on the dash, and let it go. People are afraid of the police right now. That's evident. We in law enforcement have to realize that people are afraid of the police. How do we break down that wall, break down that fear? We have to go to them and show them what they can and cannot do. But people are afraid, and when I say people are afraid, we started with young kids this side, afraid of the police, and that used to not be. So the whole purpose of this, and the whole premise behind this meeting, is to break down the walls, break down the barriers, so that you won't have those type of questions. You know exactly what to do. And there are tensions now on the officer's side and on the citizen's side upon making a traffic stop. We never know if someone has a gun, if they have a legal carry permit, if they're going to draw the gun, if they had a bad day, if they just robbed a bank or killed someone. So we don't know that. So we're taking that chance whenever we approach a car.
Chief Allen, if I may interject for one moment, I did want to call attention really quickly to Professor Foster here from Oakwood, who wanted to weigh in on this topic.
Yeah, 25 years ago, Shelby Steele, who was a conservative writer, wrote a book called The Content of Our Character. And in it, he talked about a dynamic in America called race fatigue, race fatigue, meaning that so much progress had been made by blacks 25 years ago, that America was tired of the subject of race. So think about how much more fatigued America is now. One of the things that I heard when the shootings occurred in Dallas a few weeks ago, was that the chief said that we, as a community, ask the police to do too much, and I could not agree more. If you just think about all of the questions that have been asked, we're asking them to do things that are political. Their job is enforcement. Voting is what we can do. Being involved in the community at the state and local level is what we can do. Talking amongst ourselves, North Huntsville and South Huntsville, and Madison, talking amongst ourselves. I honor your service, but the officers are our servants. They respond to our expectations and our votes. They respond to the law, but the law always has rounded edges that reflect the community. So the community has to, I actually feel like we're avoiding work. I think this is useful, but I think that we're avoiding work by pressing all of the burden on law enforcement. The burden is on us to find a way to even convince Second Amendment believers to want to sacrifice or not carry guns. We all have a right to do that. Because you have a right to do it, doesn't mean that you have to do it, or you should do it, or that's what's best for your community.
I have another question over here.
I'm a community member, and kind of my, I got sidetracked by what you were saying, but my question was back to the last question. It was kind of along the same lines, and trying to understand all of the stakeholders in this, you know, situation we're in with the violence against police. How, how do you understand, as a rule-of-law nation, but when the rule of law seems to always come down on, in favor of the police, how do you understand, then, our rule-of-law nation? And I'm just trying to look at it from their side, the people that feel this way, of trying to understand that argument. And I mean, it does, and I also kind of feel that racial profiling, while we say it's illegal, it's also important. I mean, if the event in Madison, with the Madison Police, if they had taken a moment to realize where Mr. Patel was from and what he was doing, the event probably wouldn't have happened, you know? So in some sense, you know, in keeping it real, racial profiling, you need to know who you're talking to, and the history behind the person that you're talking to. So I don't...
So what is your question?
Oh, my question was back to the, I'm sorry. My question was back to the, the, why does it seem like the police are held less accountable for the actions? And just trying to understand that side of the argument is what I'm trying to do.
Before we jump... I'm sorry. Did you want to comment on that, attorney?
If I can answer to that, the police are as accountable as any other citizen in this United States. And to cite two examples to reaffirm that is the case of, one is Mr. Patel, the Indian national that was visiting in Madison, who had that incident with the Madison Police Officer. That was, it was immediately apparent that that contact was unacceptable. It was immediately apparent to the Madison Chief of Police, who relieved him of duty immediately, and then referred that investigation to the FBI. We thoroughly investigated it, brought our findings to the US Attorney's Office and the Department of Justice, and they agreed that that was a criminal act by that police officer, and they tried him. The first, you know, unfortunately, it's not a perfect system, but it's the system that we have. You have to be found guilty beyond a reasonable doubt by 12 to 0. Can't be 11 to 1, can't be 10 to 2, it's got to be 12 to 0. So they were not able to come to a verdict for the first trial against him. So we, you know, it was the prosecution's option then to check, to conduct a second trial. We, through the US Attorney's Office and Department of Justice, there was a second trial, and it was the same result, the jury was hung, they were not able to come to a decision. And then it was finally, the judge in that case ordered the case dismissed. Now, that was, you know, we, we did everything we possibly could in that case, and it wasn't a result that we had hoped for or would want. But to just give you an example of a success story, Assistant United States Attorney Laura Hodge just had a trial last week in a civil rights color of law case against the Chief of Police in Stevenson, Alabama, who brutally assaulted a burglary suspect, and it was investigated by the FBI, and it was decided that the facts and circumstances warrant a prosecution. So Ms. Hodge and an attorney from the Department of Justice came down and had a jury trial last week, and he was found guilty on all counts. He was, he's not, sentencing, sentencing's date has yet to be set, but that was a, an example of, of the system. I think in both cases, the system functioned as it should, but once it gets to a jury, that's the way our prosecutorial system is set up, and then we have to go forward from there, and...
I'm sorry, but a quick follow-up on that. Can a department, if the chief or deputy chief, or any department, if they request you, obviously, you can step in and start to investigate. If they do not request the FBI's help in a particular case, investigating one of their own, can you guys step in? What is the process?
I can speak to that for the Huntsville Police Department, the Decatur Police Department, the Madison County Sheriff's Office, and the Alabama State Troopers Association. We work hand and glove with them, and anytime that they ask for an assistance on a case that they believe is a civil rights violation, we will work with them.
But they have to ask.
They do not have to ask. But we have, I think, a very good relationship with these agencies, that in almost every case, they recognize that there's been a, there's been an issue that would be better resolved by a federal government investigation than a state or local investigation, but it's not required.
Justice Cherry wanted to weigh in on this topic. Cherry, what did you have to add?
Well, what I wanted to add with the lady who just stepped up and spoke about when they profile you as a driver, those that have been paying attention here recently understand that Philando Castile was pulled over because he had a wide-set nose. That means he was, before he was asked any questions, the officer determined he was a black man with a wide-set nose, and he was pulled over for that reason. a black man with a wide-set nose, and he was pulled over for that reason. He was told at the beginning of the traffic stop that he was pulled over for a busted taillight. We found out later after there was no busted taillight and a dead man, that ultimately what this was, was a traffic stop gone wrong with a beginning of a profiling. Now, what we have in a community where we allow police officers to have indiscriminate use of their weapons because they will not be held responsible for the gunfires and the shoots that they make, and in this city, sir, with the FBI, you're well aware of the amount of investigations your department has been looking into with malfeasances with the officers in this county, with the Sheriff's Department and the Huntsville City Police. With Mr. Patel, that officer gave Mr. Patel no more than two seconds to give his name before he was thrown to the ground. I was at that trial. But I guess my question is this, to go back to what you were saying about profiling and things that we can do as a community, that we can step forward and ask for this respect of the officers, you want from us, respect. Now, we ask for you with respect. We have a Citizens Advisory Council. I suggest that we add to that. And with the use of a citizens review board, so that we have oversight of police activities, of city officials and those kind of activities. When a person has the right to stand before a committee or a jury, a grand jury, and ask for help in the grand jury system that you guys have and work with, that most of us know, we understand that we are put in a position that unless we come in with a lot of money, a lot of evidence, we are not going to be respected. Now, I am not black, but I have worked as a civil rights leader for over 20 years. I have lost my job before standing up for a black man in the workplace. Now, that ended in a federal case, which we want. But what I am trying to say is this, when you don't allow for the police department to truly discourse amongst these people, everyone in this audience wants to ask the question, sir, what are we going to do to stop you from shooting us? Now, that is what they want to ask, but they can't because this is a professional situation. So you can't ask that question. So I will say it, and I will say this. We, as a community, everyone in this room, needs to stand with me, through the nonprofit that I work with, and ask for a citizens review board, which allow for these people to stand in a committee and have the strength of a grand jury. We can indict that officer because you chose not to. This is what we need out here. We need to understand that you respect us as much as you're asking us to respect you. And from these guys' point of view, they're tired of getting shot. And I'm going to say it, if nobody else will. But that's my question. Sir, you well know that we have over 16,000, near 17,000 police agencies in this country. We have less than 150 citizens review boards of over 16,000 police agencies. Of that, 25% has the right to ask or to indict someone who's done something wrong. 25 of 150. What can we do in this community to make sure that we can get a citizens review board here in Huntsville, Alabama? Because if these other cities can't make it happen, we have the intelligence, and we have the people in this community that is very willing to put together a review board that we will have a voice, so that we can stand against the indictment from the DA that will never come.
Okay. So there you have it. And I know that there was a lot of ground covered. Are there, Sherry? Yes, that, no, you don't have to, thank you. Obviously, you said something that is a sentiment that is being felt through many members of the audience. So what are, first of all, the steps that can be taken, whether it be in Huntsville, whether it be in Decatur, whether it be, no matter where any of us call home, if there is any interest in forming a citizens review board? And back to the larger question, which is, how do you...
If we had a citizens review board, would you honor it? That's my question. Would you honor it?
First off, if we had one set up, we wouldn't have a choice but to honor it. And it would obviously depend on how it's set up, and what I mean is what authority can be given it. Now, traditionally, and Chief can agree or disagree, but the studies I've read have shown that citizen review boards are not effective in respects to, that they, that a lot of times, police departments will police themselves even harder than a citizen review board ever will. However, I'm not an expert in that area, and I'm not about to ask or pretend that I am. Now, I hate to call out, but the gentleman in this audience is part of the Citizen Advisory Council. The Citizen Advisory Council was appointed several years ago by members of the council and the mayor, and they have been involved in many aspects of our department through selection, through disciplinary, and have even sat in and been part of the incident review board. I would tell that you should talk to him or any of the other members and ask them their opinions.
Sir, I'm here and they wouldn't accept me on their Citizens Action Council there because apparently I'm too loud and I have issues. So don't think that I haven't stood before...
Well, that's fine, I don't know. I don't know your background.
I was just not picked.
I understand, but I'm just saying, I don't know your background. I am saying that the council members and the mayors each have picked, and there are several members on there. I'm just saying, we've had that in place for quite some time.
About four years.
Okay.
Really quick, Sherry, thank you, and thank you, officers, for answering that question. I want to throw in really quickly, because we only have about 15 minutes left, and we have a number of people have been waiting very patiently. Justice, if you want to go ahead and work your way down the line.
Let's get to Troy here. What's your question, sir?
Well, the question, I'm going to lead into the question with this observation. The frustration that's felt in the black community is what our sister here expressed, which is, we have white police officers who are constantly and consistently acquitted for killing black men. Now, if you've noticed what happened this time, the frustration didn't come after the acquittal, the frustration came immediately when these two young men were shot. And the reason is, is because in our community, we already know what the outcome is. And so here's the appearance is, and appearance of racism. The system is just rigged against black people, because when black men kill black men in Chicago and in Baltimore and wherever else where they like to highlight, those black men go to jail for killing other black men. But when the white police officers kill black men, they don't go to jail. So my question to anybody on the panel is this, when are we going to start talking about the real issue of race in the United States? And deal with the root, rather than skirting over? Because all of us here know, as much as we're frustrated with the police officers, as Chief Allen said, when we need them, we want them there. I don't know about you, I want them to come. So I look beyond the fact that we're dealing with whether the police officers have a citizens review board and all that stuff, to the fact that there's racial tension in the United States. There's racial tension in the city of Huntsville, there's racial tension in the city of Decatur, and nobody wants to talk about it. We have to be bold enough, as adults, to begin to say that in our homes, as black folk, we talk about white people. And in our homes, as white folk, we talk about black people. And we don't have the conversation together to begin to understand each other. So what I'm asking, each one of those people up there, I'm asking you, when are you going to be bold enough to say? We need to have a conversation that deals with the racial tensions in America that rose up since 2008.
Chief Allen.
I'll start off with that conversation, and that's something, Pastor, that you know we're doing in Decatur. I've been there now a couple of months. I come from a city of Knoxville, Tennessee, and we do have our citizens review committee there. And it got started very difficult, too. It was not accepted first, especially by law enforcement, and now it is accepted. I feel that the citizens review committee, what it does, it allows the citizens and out, someone else to talk to outside of policing, and that's the key. And I think that's really needed. As far as having a conversation now, which is very difficult, when you talk to citizens, black, white, or police officers, when you start talking about diversity, let's have a real conversation about race, everybody gets tensed up, and no one wants to talk about race. I don't ever mind talking about race. And the reason for that is, if we're talking, that means we're sharing and we're learning. Because it's okay to have different opinions, it's okay to have different cultures, but understand that it's different. And it's okay. I mean, if all I did was surround myself with black people, we only can think one way, the way black people think. If I surrounded myself with only white people, then we only think one way. So we need to have that diversity. People ask me, and I'll give this a short story, why I wanted to be a chief of police. And I look around the police departments, and I look around the nation, and I hear constantly, we need more minority officers. We need more officers to represent the community. And my wife looked at me and she said, we also need more minority officers on the top end. And that's what made me become a chief of police, because I didn't want to be no chief. I'm ready to retire and go home. She said, you are driving me, uh-uh, I'm not getting involved in this. But she says, no, what have you trained for? You have trained to be here. And that's why I'm here. I don't ever mind having a hard conversation, because the harder the conversation is, the more we learn. I've been here two months, and I already know who you are.
Your face is fine.
Exactly right. So...
I'm sorry, Kelly, and I'm leaving you, we're going to break.
And I love that. I love that. And the biggest key to that thing is, it's one thing I want to share with everybody, it's okay to be different, and it's okay to disagree.
Thank you, Chief. What's your name, what's your question?
My name's Squirty, and I want to pose this question to the Huntsville Police Chief. You mentioned earlier that racial profiling is illegal, and with all due respect, it felt a little insensitive, because racial profiling is also very hard to prove. So though it may be illegal, it's very hard to prove that that cop or that person racially profiled me. So with that question feeling, it stung a little bit, it hurt a little bit. My question to you is, do you feel that you empathize with what we're going through? Do you feel like you understand what we're going through? Because I'm finding, as I go around my circle of friends, and my husband and I make a very good point to do, as this officer just said, and make our circle very diverse, I'm finding that a lot of the people in my circle do not empathize, because they feel like it's nonexistent. And so I know that you're here to serve, but I'm very curious, do you empathize with us? Because to say that racially profile someone is illegal without also understanding that that's very hard to prove. Do you feel like you understand?
And when I said that, obviously, I'm stating the obvious. You know, I don't have the eloquent words that my counterpart does, and he does a great job, and I appreciate you being here. But, I mean, I can't sit here and say it doesn't happen, I can't say that. I want to be able to say we don't have it happen, because we don't police that, well, maybe back up, we don't preach that. That is not, that's not acceptable. And if we find that somebody's doing that, we will deal with that person accordingly. Now, do I empathize with the black community as well as I can? And when I say that, obviously, I'm not a black man. But now, what are my experiences? I was brought up to respect everybody. I had a conversation one time with a gentleman older than me, if you can imagine that, and he asked me a question. He said, he asked me about a previous chief, and he said, is Chief so-and-so, is he black and white? I said, I don't remember. And my point of that was, I don't look at skin color. I couldn't care less. Everybody had different ways that they're raised and so forth, and certainly with that, that's the way I was raised. So I empathize in that sense. I don't want the community to be fearful of us in any respect, no matter where they come from, no matter what they look like, no matter where they work, no matter their skin color, no matter their hairdo, no matter their clothing or anything. Because we are here for you, and that's what I believe in.
She wanted to follow up, but because we're running out of time, I want to try to shrink it down just a little bit. And she's saying that we have to think about color anyway, and I think what she's trying to say is, and even though you were raised to respect everybody, I think there are people in this audience who would say, and this is what's been said on social media as well, there are other members of your law enforcement agency, as well as yours and as well as yours, who may not have been raised to respect everybody. How do you go through, when you hire a cadet, when you decide to give someone the power and authority to become a police officer, how do you tell who's here and who has the best intentions, and who's here and who may not?
You want me to...
Tough question.
Okay. Well, real briefly, we go through a very intensive background check, and one of the things we check is also social media. That's out there, and it's never coming back. In other words, once you put it out there, you're not getting it back. So if we see a young man or a woman who views are racial, or whose views are, you know, certainly not what is acceptable of a Huntsville police officer, or even a Decatur police officer, or any law enforcement, we don't want them. Simply do not want them.
Really quickly, Justice, let me just interrupt for one second, and we only have about five minutes left, and we have covered a tremendous amount of ground. So I want to put this out there for everybody, and hopefully we'll get a chance to get some more questions. We've all come together tonight, there's obviously something in each and every one of us that has brought us into this room. What can each one of us, sitting out here, including you gentlemen right here, you folks who are representing the community, what can we all leave this meeting, thinking about, to make our respective communities in North Alabama a little bit more peaceful, to take away a little bit more tension, to take away a little bit more discrimination, whether people want to admit it or not? What can we leave this room and go forth and do? And I'm open to absolutely anybody's thoughts on this.
I talked about community involvement, but the difficult question is, and trying to follow up on that last question, is the basic issue, I believe, is trust. And as a black man, as a political scientist, et cetera, I think what we can ask you to do, as law enforcement people, is to have the blue wall conversation. Meaning that the trust is that, or the mistrust is that, there will be cover-ups, and the culture rewards that. And what we, I know it sounds naive, but if you see lawbreaking within the police force, will you enforce that, as though that person did not have a uniform? I think that's the root of community trust, that you can take on your side of the street.
That is correct. You have to put your trust into law enforcement. You have to trust us to do the right thing, and especially charge. The FBI is vacking us on it. It's one thing the FBI agent did not mention to you all, and I'm going to mention it to you. If you think that one of us has violated our civil rights or violated your rights, you can go and report it directly to the FBI, and they have to take your complaint. You don't have to come to me. You don't have to get my approval to get that investigation started. You can go right there and file your charges against us with the FBI at any time. And remember I said about knowing what the laws are? And yes, you have to trust that, especially being chiefs, that we're going to do the right thing, that if we see something wrong within a department, we got to take corrective action. I really think that was the reason that the Decatur Police Department went outside to hire an outside chief, because I have no ties there. I don't have any political ties within the department or within the community. I have to build them all up. And from what I have learned, just being here a couple of months, and I heard it today, everybody and their cousin did a Google search on me before I got here. And that was good, that was good. For the past 30 years, I've tried to live my life right and do the right thing, the right thing according to what I knew of, and based on my training, education, and upbringing. So yes, you've got to have that trust out there. And how do you build trust? You have to go out there, one, talk with your community, and show them that you mean business and that you do what you say.
And Afu had another point that he wanted to add.
One of the things, you know, when I look in the room, I would assume that this is a room full of community leaders. One of the things that, you know, from my experience is, when you're working from either, you know, grassroots approach to, from the bottom up, but I know from a leadership perspective, we're working top-down. And leadership has to be representative of the population, and that's an understanding, that's a knowledge, that's in, you know, how do we go about leading our community? So one of that is exposure. A lot of what we fear is the lack of exposure, we don't understand. So the reality for me is this, as a young black man, I am a child of the hip-hop culture, hip-hop generation. And if you overwhelmingly have a community that only consumes a culture but doesn't actually experience or live it, then that's a misunderstanding and miscommunication right there. So when I'm in Huntsville, when I'm in downtown Huntsville, which is regularly, and I don't have, and people don't look like me, and I'm there, and I'm dressed casually, if I'm the face of the thing that you fear, then of course there'll be a misunderstanding. But if you're not actually exposed to me and to my culture, then you won't understand. The same with the LGBT community, the same with the Muslim, with the Islamic community. The things that you... you don't understand. So, one thing that I feel that we can do better as a community is to actually face those fears and have an actual in-depth understanding of the things that we don't understand, and actually put ourselves out of our comfort zone to be able to better that communication.
Okay. Folks, what we want to let our viewers who are watching us online right now know is that we are going to conclude things on the web. We are still going to be taking questions, though, from the audience and for everybody at home who has been watching. I think it's safe to say, we greatly appreciate the tremendous amount of feedback and input we have received. But again, the discussion will still be continuing here on the campus of Oakwood University.
So, we want to thank you all for coming out. Thank you all for answering all those tough questions. We definitely appreciate it. And make sure you all tune in tonight at 10:00 PM for WAI TV Hometown News at 10.
Now, back to you in Huntsville.
In more election news, tonight, for the first time, all candidates for mayor from the Shoals will be under one roof for the 2016 Shoals Mayoral Debate. With everyone's Brecken Terry joins us live from the University of North Alabama, where the debate will kick off shortly. Brecken?
Yeah, I'm here at Norton Auditorium, where the Shoals Mayoral Debate will kick off at 6:00 o'clock. Now, just behind me over here in the distance, they actually have some barricades set up for anyone who wants to protest. They have given them a designated area. Now, a group of young professionals called Shoals Next Generation is hosting the debate. The stage is set, and so far, we know at least eight candidates...